Welcome to the seven o'clock meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for November twentieth, two thousand and twelve. I call this meeting to order, invite you to stand. We have a guest with us tonight to provide the invocation. It's Pastor Julio Jean Gilis from the Bethesda Church and Bethesda School located in the city of Madeline, the country of Haiti. I had the privilege of hearing Pastor Julio speak this last Sunday. I invited him to be with us if he would come forward and provide our invocation, Pastor.
I thank God for the privilege he is giving me to be with you tonight. And from the bottom of my heart, and I bring you all greeting tonight from our country, Haiti, which I love very much, and I want to serve as long as I can serve. And all I can do it is because I have wonderful friend from this country and from other part of the world beside me. I was nothing, growing nothing, hopeless, homeless. I did not know I'm going to have a future in my life until Jesus came in my life twenty-five years ago and make huge difference. And today I can serve each other with about five hundred members and a school with two hundred students. So my goal is to wisdom, to serve the country of Haiti and to become the leaders of this nation and to be God leaders for Haiti. So once again, it's an honor and it's a privilege for me to be here, and I'm so thankful and gracious to Mr. Bruce for this privilege he is giving me to be here tonight, to be with wonderful people like you. And I thank you for allowing me to be part of you, and I pray God is going to bless you tonight and bless this city. And hopefully, someone is going to come to Haiti and share your blessings to the people of Haiti, especially the precious children we have in Haiti. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I will thank you so much for this great time we can have tonight here and the privilege it's giving me to be part of this wonderful meeting tonight. I thank you for all my friends in this country, bow and states, especially in Bowlin Green in Turkey. And tonight, we are here asking for wisdom, asking for knowledge, so these wonderful leaders would be able to lead this city to your kingdom, to your glory, and take the wonderful decision to bless this city and to get things working much better than it was in the past in this city. So my prayer tonight, God, is to open the eyes and the hearts of the leaders, especially Mr. Bruce and his staff, to look for your guidance in every decision they're going to take, they're going to make for this city. And we pray that the people will respond to the decision they're going to take because it's going to be inspired by the Holy Spirit, by Jesus, for the benefits of this city and not only this city, for the benefits of this great nation have been built under God. Once again, God, we thank you and we ask you for knowledge and we ask you for guidance. We ask you for wisdom and bless everybody here tonight so they can go home inspired and be ready to share, be ready to involve for the greatness of this great city for your glory, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Julio. I invite you to enjoy me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Hallard, please call the roll.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson. Here. The first item of business we have tonight on the agenda is a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the proposed municipal aid program for the liquid fuels tax funds and coal severance and processing tax and mineral service, mineral severance tax funds. Mr. Febo.
Yeah. Melissa Kansler will lead us in this process. Melissa?
Again, I'm Melissa Kansler with the Public Works Department, and thank you all for having me tonight. This is our annual presentation to review the fund activity for municipal aid and coal mineral severance tax and then kind of highlight our proposed projects for your consideration for those funds. As a review, the municipal aid is basically a tax collected by the state, also known as liquid fuel tax, that they collect on every gallon of gas sold in the state. And then those funds are distributed out to municipalities like Bowling Green. And basically, what we're supposed to do is use those to maintain our roadway network. Every year, we receive money from these funds, and this year it's projected from the taxes and the interest revenue, one million, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, with this money, we propose expenditures in three major areas, three major projects: our typical street resurfacing program, our sidewalk rehabilitation program, and then hopefully a final component of our downtown traffic signal expansion. Total expenditures are at one million, ninety thousand dollars and leaves us with a projected ending balance of seven ninety-one, three forty-eight. We've included in your packets a list of the streets that we propose to overlay for FY thirteen, and those total of four point three miles approximately. We do not anticipate any increase in the asphalt prices. However, there are several streets on that list that are going to require extensive rehabilitation, so we do have a higher linear cost per mile of streets this time. And also this year, one thing we did do, and not just this year, but the last couple of years, we have really focused on utility coordination. We always provide them a list of the streets we propose to overlay, but this year, in the past couple of years, we have kind of gathered from them their capital improvement projects. And actually, there are four streets that you approved last year that we have postponed because of underground utility work. And we have put those four projects at the top of FY thirteen, and you'll see those as the first four projects on your list. With that money that we were going to spend on those projects, and one of them was a rehabilitation project, so there's quite a bit of money left on the FY twelve contract. We do have some supplemental streets that we propose to use that money for, and we've included those as well for your consideration. As a review, our, the way we look at these and the way we pick our streets are from several different components. Our Cartograph Asset Management System, basically that is pulling from annual street inspections that we do every year. We consider citizen requests, just our typical field surveys and observations, and then finally, anything that we didn't do in a previous year, any carryovers, we also consider. Let's see. Go back one. Okay. A second project that we are proposing to use LFT funds for is our annual sidewalk rehab program. This is not to be confused with our new sidewalk program. This is a hundred thousand dollars that we allocate for any areas that have sidewalk that are in bad shape. This year, we are focusing on College View Drive at Old Morgantown Road. And basically, right now, because we had some remaining funds from last year's contract, approximately twenty-nine thousand, we're going to try to carry that forward and try to do more. So we also have an additional fifty-seven thousand in fund balance, and then in talking with Brent, we found that we have twenty-five thousand CDBG money that we can use in this area, in the Enterprise District. So that brings us to a total of two hundred and eleven thousand. Now, I know our ultimate goal is to get from Old Morgantown Road to Glen Lilly Road. We won't quite make it with this, but we'll get awfully close. Right now, we're hoping to get about twenty-five hundred feet of sidewalk curb and gutter and any necessary drainage infrastructure in place with this money. That, you know, that could be give or take, considering site conditions, once we get into design. But hopefully, we'll have that corridor underway and maybe in subsequent years we can complete that corridor. Here's a look at the existing sidewalk as it is today. Primarily, it's on the right side. We'll be adding curb and gutter, necessary drainage, widening the sidewalk, handicap accessibility. There is a section on down that is on the left side, but it's a short section, so we're going to try to keep everything on one side of the street. And finally, as I mentioned before, we're hoping to wrap up our downtown signal upgrades. Back in two thousand and six, when we did the big project, we left off Center Street and Chestnut Street. This past year, we completed Main and Center with the new mast arms, new pedestrian heads, and hopefully, that signal's operating better than before. We're proposing the same this year with these funds at Eleventh and Center, the new mast arm poles to match downtown, new pedestrian signals to match, traffic loops, any signage and strapping that's necessary. And then also, some of that money of the total one hundred and forty thousand dollars to be used at Tenth Avenue and Chestnut Street. Currently, that intersection does have mast arms. They're the old silver ones that were at Chestnut Main. And if you recall, at Chestnut Main, we painted those black, added pedestrian heads, made it look a lot nicer. Those are the same improvements that we propose here at Tenth and Chestnut. As you can see here, those are the old ones. We're going to add new pedestrian heads to match and poles to match downtown, paint those black, and add any necessary loops and upgrades to help make that intersection function better. So with the completion of those intersections, I believe we have addressed every one of the signals in the downtown area. Hopefully, we can close that out. Another source of funding that we get from the state is the coal and mineral severance tax. Again, they collect this from coal and mineral haulers based on their impact to the system and the transportation network. And because Warren County is identified as an impacted county, Bowling Green stands to receive those funds each year. This year, we anticipate revenues of approximately forty thousand dollars. However, because of last year, we spent additional funds from this coal and mineral severance tax fund balance to finish Center and Main, we're not proposing to use any for a major project this year. However, talking to Katie and Jeff as well, they made me aware that this money is used for maintaining our transportation network. So they can be used on an as-needed basis for safety, winter de-icer for our streets. Another use possibly, we thought, maybe our in-house sidewalk rehab when we come across safety issues, if our in-house staff needs to use this to complete some of those sidewalk safety issues. With that in consideration, our fund balance is fifty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. So with that said, our, this year's, in summary, our projects are our annual overlay, our sidewalk rehabilitation program, and finally, our traffic signal expansion program. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Kansler? Seeing none, this is a public hearing that we're required to have for the use of the liquid fuels tax and the coal severance tax funds. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment about this particular item, I'd invite you to please come forward to the microphone. Seeing no one and having no other comments, we'll close this public hearing and move on to the next item. Do we have any words and recognitions tonight?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any comments?
Yes, two. One, I'd like to, with your courtesy, pull Municipal Order eighteen. The county informed us that they're not ready to entertain this, and so we ask that you pull number eighteen. And second, there'll be a need for an executive session, and Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to Kara sixty-one, eight, ten F, discussions which might lead to the appointment of an individual employee without restricting that employee's right to a public hearing. If requested, the exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussions of general personnel matters in secret.
Motion. Second. Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the October sixteenth, two thousand and twelve meeting. Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Next, we have time for our public comments, which I think most of you are here for. If anyone in the audience would like to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, we would invite you to step up to the microphone. If you would line up over here on this side, Mr. Biggerstaff has already approached me about being first. If you would, when you get to the microphone, give us your name and address, and then we have a three-minute limit on your comments, if you don't mind. So, Mr. Biggerstaff, if you would step up, please, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Ray Biggerstaff. I live in Albaton, and I represent the Come and Pray's Chapter of the Military Officers' Association of America. We currently have over twenty thousand veterans in the Barren River Area Development District. Colonel Robert Spiller and I are working with Rodney Curtley, who's the Executive Director of Brad, and his grant writers to develop a proposal requesting funds from the federal government for a, for the construction of a nursing home for veterans in the Bowling Green area. We currently have over forty letters of support, and thanks to you, Mr. Mayor, this was the first, one of our first letters that we received for support. We have letters of support from the hospitals, the medical society, all the service organizations, the veterans programs from WKU, and all of the surrounding counties as well. Now, one thing that we're missing is a proposal, or added proposal, for land. We have to have this in order to submit the request to the state legislature. They'll eventually ask us for land, and we would request that you help us to identify some of the entrepreneurs or landowners that would be able to allocate maybe five to ten acres for this facility. And there's a tremendous opportunity, if someone has a lot of property, to have a tremendous development concept around this facility, which would be a medical complex or whatever it might be. And we currently have hundreds of proposals in Washington, and we have other areas of the state, such as Owensboro, Fort Thomas, and Somerset, that we're going to have to get this proposal together and get to the state legislature and get on the list there as early as possible. We've been keeping the senators from this area informed as to what we're doing, and we graciously would really appreciate your active participation in identifying for the Brad Director, Rodney, to identify some of the landowners that would be able to contribute to this process. Thank you very much. I do have information here for each one of you.
If you could leave it with the clerk, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Biggerstaff. We appreciate the work that you're doing, and thank you very much. Next up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. John David Ryan, I live on Rose Lawn, right here in the city. I want to thank you for your time tonight. We here, kind of collectively gathering a lot of people with matching shirts, are here to ask you to consider adopting a fairness ordinance to prohibit discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. As you all probably already know, it is still legal in our city, and most of Kentucky for that matter, to fire someone from a job, deny them a place to live, or kick them out of a restaurant if someone even thinks they're lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. And it's not right, and it's not fair. I've lived in Bowling Green all my life. I genuinely care about this city and everyone that lives in it, and try to live a life that reflects that. As a person of faith, I believe in the teachings and way of Jesus Christ and the Golden Rule, which promote treating others the way I want to be treated and fighting against discrimination in all forms. A fairness ordinance embodies these basic Christian values, which I believe in and which are held by most residents of Bowling Green. According to a recent survey by the Shapiro Group, I'm not alone, about eighty-three percent of Kentuckians support simple anti-discrimination protections. And this is across the board, Republican, Democrat, independents alike, and from all over the state. And while we'd love to see a statewide ordinance protecting all Kentuckians from this type of discrimination, it's the responsibility of communities like ours to take the lead in this issue until our state's General Assembly takes action. Bowling Green has a truly unique opportunity to be on the forefront of civil rights in our state and our country, and it won't require much cost or effort on the city's part. Tonight, I implore you, stand on the right side of history. Stand for fairness for all Bowling Green residents. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
My name's Kyle O'Donnell. I live right up the street at one-two-two-five College Street. Mayor Wilkerson and Board of Commissioners, I am a proud Masters in Business Administration student here at Western Kentucky University, who, like so many of my classmates, is a supporter of fairness. For most of my peers and myself, it seems illogical that someone could still be fired from a job, denied a place to live, or kicked out of a restaurant because of who they are. We believe that everyone deserves the opportunity to work hard, earn a living, put a roof over their head, and eat at their favorite restaurant without fear of being kicked out just because they're lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. As I finished my last year at Western Kentucky University, I'll be making the important decision of where to work, build my family, and apply my skills and education. I know that I am not the only one who will be basing part of the decision of where to live and work on whether or not the community has a fairness ordinance, proof that the city is open, accepting, and diverse. We know a fairness ordinance is good for business. As you'll see in your informational packets, all of Kentucky's Fortune 500 companies have policies prohibiting this type of discrimination. We know that when companies and employees are making the same decisions that I will soon make about where to move their business and families, they look for these types of protections. I genuinely hope that you will consider making Bowling Green a civil rights leader in our state. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Just a minute, are you back?
Good evening, Mayor Wilkerson and the Board of Commissioners. My name is Patricia Minter. I live at twelve-sixty-two Chestnut Street, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to take a moment to highlight some of the important information in your packets about the fairness ordinance. As you can see, when you review the fiscal impact statement prepared by the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights, Bowling Green could expect the associated cost of between two thousand and three thousand dollars per year to enforce a fairness law, which is an incredibly small amount to ensure fair and equal treatment of every resident and visitor in our city. Given the experience of communities like Covington and Louisville, which currently enforce fairness protections, Bowling Green will likely have two jurisdictional complaints each year, and most of these complaints can be resolved through mediation, which has very minimal associated costs. That means, on average, Bowling Green can expect only one discrimination complaint every ten years that requires an actual administrative hearing. Both the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights and the Lexington Fair Housing Council have offered assistance at no cost to our city to assist our Human Rights Commission in intake, investigation, and mediation of fairness ordinance complaints. So the draft ordinance that you have in your packets is really just that. It is a draft that can be altered or amended in any way that you see fit to best accommodate the capabilities of the city. The packet contains an ordinance that has exemptions for religious institutions, small business owners, and small rental units. This is a very simple solution to help make Bowling Green residents feel supported and protected, and to help make our city more attractive to businesses and people looking to move into our community, who look increasingly for things such as fairness protections when making their relocation decisions, as you have heard. For me, Bowling Green having a fairness ordinance would mean that I would live and work in a place where all people have equal rights and can live and work without fear. I don't worry about such rights, but I do worry about those who do not have them and who live in fear. Because if all people do not have the same rights that many of us do, then actually, none of us possess those rights, and none of us really have guarantees. So it is time to be on the right side of history. It is fair, it is right, and it is time for all the people, not some of the people in Bowling Green, to live and know that there is liberty and justice for all of us. I hope you'll consider taking action on these protections soon, and I encourage you to reach out to our allies and to us for any additional information that we can provide you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mender. Is there anyone else? This man.
Hi, I'm Dana Bradley, a professor at Western Kentucky University, and I'm here to provide a quick, brief update on the Age Friendly Cities Project, which is an initiative of the city of Bowling Green. I want to let you know that we've just had a brief site visit by Kelly, Dr. Kelly Fitzgerald, who's with me, from the World Health Organization. She is their Network Affiliate Advisor, and she spent two days with us and reviewed some of the progress we've made in the past few months. In particular, she was very pleased to meet with some of our recent graduates of the Citizen Academy. As you know, that was a fabulous program that trained twenty-seven older adults here in Bowling Green with the help of all of the employees of Bowling Green, some of our nonprofits, and was led admirably by Karen Foley. In fact, we have some of the graduates here in the audience. Raise your hand.
There they are.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
And so for people who didn't get a chance to meet some of them, they spent an entire week learning about how the city of Bowling Green works in great detail. And they're going to be joining us this spring as we convene conversations in the Ask Bowling Green Initiative to learn how we can make Bowling Green the best possible community we can. Because the question we ask in these conversations is what kind of community do we want to live in? So we're really excited they're going to be joining us, and the World Health Organization is very pleased with the progress we're making in our first-year baseline assessment. So I wanted to publicly thank each of you on the council and all of our city employees for this great work we've done so far and as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. That was a great experience for both those presenting and those that were present as well. Thank you all for coming. Is there any other public comments? Well, we're going to continue with our agenda, and you guys are welcome to stay if you like. We're about as interesting as watching paint dry for the most part, but you're welcome to stick around. As some of our audience are leaving, we'll, without objection, we'll be moving item number nineteen, which is the table to first reading of the rezoning, to the top of the agenda. I think they have some individuals here ready to deal with that, so. Okay, while they're quietly leaving, we'll need to entertain an ordinance, I mean, a Municipal Order to remove ordinance number two thousand and twelve dash forty-one from the table. Motion by Nash and second by Hill. There's no discussion on moving from the table, so please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And now I need a motion, or excuse me, we need to read the ordinance number two thousand and twelve forty-one for consideration.
Ordinance number two thousand and twelve thirty-nine. Ordinance rezoning real estate.
Thirty-nine, yes.
Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing one point five six acres from RM three multifamily residential to GB, general business, located at six-zero-three Old Morgantown Road, presently owned by PSM Enterprises LTD, with Red Coselik as contract fundee.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Now we're prepared for our discussion, I think. It's probably appropriate that you go through your spiel again, if you would.
As if you haven't heard this already before.
Yes, sir.
But we'll go through the, quickly, the procedures again. In a rezoning matter, you have a couple of choices that you can do. You can approve the recommendations from Planning Commission without doing anything else any further. You simply adopt this ordinance and with two readings, accept their recommendations, and it's approved. What you cannot do, you cannot simply vote no on their recommendations. If you disapprove of those recommendations, then you have to make your own independent findings of fact and conclusions about, with specific facts about why this property should not be rezoned. And of course, those facts have to be different than those facts found by the Planning Commission. For example, they found it's in compliance with a comprehensive plan. If you read their minutes and review their meetings, you can make a determination that in fact it was not in compliance based upon specific- in fact it was not in compliance based upon specific ideas or concepts set forth in their minutes. There were also, there's also a case law out there that says that even if it is in compliance, you don't necessarily have to approve it if you can look at things such as traffic uses in a neighborhood where this is now inconsistent with the uses and some other things set out in those cases. Procedurally, what we have normally done for the last several is if you decide to go forward, for example, tonight, what you've done most of the time is limit this to a strict argument-type argument from people in support, people opposed, set some kind of a timeframe, let them come in, summarize the evidence and the testimony that came before the Planning Commission. As everybody's aware, there's already been a full-blown hearing before the Planning Commission, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You can limit the argument from both sides just to the facts that were stated that night and let them make arguments based upon those facts. The last time we did this, as you will, where we also prohibited new people from coming forward and speaking tonight who did not speak before the Planning Commission, to make sure that we stayed within the realm of making your decision based upon the record before the Planning Commission. So that's kind of where we are tonight. I know the attorney for the, for the people who want to rezon this, Mark Alcott is here. Hamp has joined us tonight in case there's some guest questions about what went on before the Planning Commission that they were hearing as well. And I guess after they've gotten the questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but I think anybody here has gone through my little recitation before, so I think we're ready to go forward with, if you want, I'm sure if you want Steve to go first, but I'll leave that at your preference how you want to proceed.
I've heard none to reopen to have an entirely new hearing, so unless someone objects, we will commit it to what's on the record and allow them to make a presentation summarizing their facts. Does that work with everybody?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Hunter, would you very quickly run through real quick?
Thank you. The Planning Commission met on September 20, 2012, to rezone, to consider rezoning on a tract that's 1.56 acres on Old Morgantown Road. You should have a staff report, binding elements, various maps, pictures, and our minutes. I think it's your seat. The staff had four items of concern prior to submission of the binding elements. There were 12 binding elements submitted to the Planning Commission. Four were revised on the floor of the Planning Commission. Four of those binding elements, just as a note, are stricter requirements than the general business rezoning district that the applicants are requesting, you know, tighter, for example, signage, smaller than what would be allowed by normal. The Planning Commission looked at 17 policies, determined that 17 policies were in compliance. However, three policies were what we'd call a judgment call. Those were LU5A6, 5A12, and 5B1, two of which dealt with open space or lot coverage. And again, a policy, one of those policies said there should be at least a half acre of green space, and the applicant's committed to 70-75 percent, so they were short by 2% to 100% being in compliance with that policy. And then...
Say that again, short, how much?
2%. 2%. It says one half acre or 20% of lots should be landscaped when it's adjacent to residential, and the applicant's binding element's committed to a lot coverage of 70 to 75%. So the exact number would have been 68%. And again, somewhat of a judgment call when it's that close, so LU5A6 was in both compliance and noncompliance. 5A12 deals with sound design principles for building, parking, landscaping, et cetera. And again, the applicant indicated they were going to keep the existing structure, run a grocery out of the structure, so again, not much change there. So again, signed design principles for building, it'd basically be the same building, but retrofitted for a grocery store. So again, judgment call on those issues. And then 5B1, again, deals with landscape requirements at 25% is the policy directive, and those are just guidance policies, and the applicant, again, committed to 70-75% lot coverage, which again is right in that ballpark, but it didn't exactly say 75%. So with that, after much discussion and testifying for and against the case, we had several cases that night, Planning Commission voted nine to zero to forward to the City Commission a recommendation of approval. And at your table meeting, you guys asked several questions, and I made sure the applicant is here tonight, as I think Gene just mentioned, and their attorney, and the Planning Commission attorney's here, again, if there's any technical issues related to some of the requests that you all made, I think in regard to binding elements.
All right. Before we go to any summarization, let's, if we have any questions for Mr. Hunter at this point? Yes, sir?
Yes. Mr. Hunter, while there are various zoning classifications that are in this area, this particular piece of property is surrounded mostly by zoning of RM3. There are, in a two-block radius, one, two, three, four, only five of all the lots that are there. All the others are residential RM3, and if we look at the land use map, it's also similar, although the zoning may be RM3. The land use map as it exists shows most of it to be residential as well, with the exception of those few properties. So, given that the immediate area surrounding this particular piece of property is residential, is there a compelling need to rezone the property? Meaning, can this property be successfully used within its current multifamily zoning classification?
It's a tough question. The applicant really probably needs to address, is there a compelling need to rezone? Because again, they chose to file an application and make a request. Could the property be used as RM3 or residential? Sure it could. I believe the housing stock is still in a configuration that could be used residential, but the property owner has made a request to rezone the property to commercial, and the Planning Commission doesn't really judge the applications, whether or not we should go forward based on the issues you just raised. We let them file their application, let the Planning Commission sort through the requests, and follow the policy directives when they make their change. But, you know, they might want to stand up here and explain to you what exactly the proposal was, because I believe their commercial request tied into the residential component of the neighborhood as far as support services or a neighborhood grocery, basically. But you're right, Commissioner Nash, it's RM3 on the map in all directions, except for immediately, one side and then a couple lots down, there's some office zoning in that same block.
If you can't answer that question, I'll leave it to Mr. Alcott.
Sure.
Does the rezoning of this particular piece of property meet a policy objective for the Planning Commission?
The 17 policies that were reviewed, it isn't, it's in the staff's opinion, and again, the Planning Commission voted nine to zero, 17 of the policies were met in compliance. However, three would again be a judgment call. The Planning Commission, if they so choose, could have said, we think 14 are in compliance, and there might be three that are marginal. And as any case, the Planning Commission could have chose that that one policy was the most important policy and chose to, you know, deny the case. But they did vote nine to zero to forward your recommendation, and their motion included all 17 policies to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
And they voted on those to be in compliance when in fact they're not?
I would say 17 are in compliance, three are a judgment call.
Okay.
Close. And again, in the staff's opinion, we don't vote. But again, we're talking 2% on the one policy. The lot coverage calculation was at 70%. When we just roughly calculated it, it's 68% is what a half acre would be by the policy directive.
Was the traffic, potential increased traffic, since we don't, I mean, we have an idea of what may go there, but we don't know what could be there over the years. Was traffic considered? Was the historic and traditional use of the property and the traditional and historic use of the existing properties around it considered with regards to this zoning change?
Traffic is considered, however, traffic study is not required until you hit 500 trips a day, and with each zoning request that comes in the office, we look at the zoning and determine if we think it's a high-traffic generator, moderate-traffic generator, low-traffic generator. A grocery store, a neighborhood grocery store, did not trigger the trips needed to do a full traffic study. However, there were policies in the staff report related to transportation, one, two, three, four, five. Six policies that related to traffic, access, city's access management manual, setbacks, collector streets, all of those policies were considered, and the application met all six of them.
That's based upon the square footage of the existing structure, correct?
Square footage, and the other part of your question was what could happen in the future, and, you know, for example, what if a 20,000-square-foot building was to go on the property, the building was...
Let's say a 10,000.
10,000.
That's what the binding elements will allow.
Up to 10,000.
Is for the owner of the property, at any point in the future, if the zoning classification goes through, while I believe in their commitment to keep the building as it stands right now, they can't predict 12 months, 12 years, 22 years down the road. So that building can be leveled, and a 10,000-square-foot building can be built in the middle of, as the maps show, RM3, and usage shows a residential area.
Yeah. And at that case, you're correct, a 10,000-square-foot building is the max. They did prohibit certain uses, including a gas station, but it wouldn't, they did not legislate out, for example, a bank or fast food. Those would be the type of things that would be high-traffic generators in the future. However, our zoning ordinance and your laws, regulations, and your traffic access management manual do assume that if the use was to change, for example, let's say they did this, a bank was going to go there, for example, a traffic study can be required at a future later date if the use changes. But the applicant indicated a neighborhood grocery store, which was a low-traffic generator, and they did legislate off all these items here, including the gas station, so we're not going to have a convenience store unless it was one that didn't sell gas. Those would be high-traffic generators, convenience stores, especially the ones with fast food connected with them. So in the future, you're correct, the applicant could tear the building down, build a 10,000 square-foot structure, and for example, if a bank went in with drive-through lanes, it would probably be a high-traffic generator and a traffic study would be needed, I would assume, at the building permit phase of that redevelopment. But what the applicant indicated us was it was a neighborhood grocery store, keep the house as it is. And then the only other part of that is they did agree in binding element nine, if any new structure was built, it would have a residential scare, scale, and character in those building materials. So, but it could be a 10,000-square-foot building, but it would somehow have to be residential scale and character. I don't think that's what the applicants intend to do, but all those are what ifs that you raised are potentially there.
Because the zoning, if the zoning were to go through, it's allowed.
General business would allow just about...
I believe what their intent is, and I believe their intent is to leave the structure as it is now, but it would be allowed. If their intent changed, it would be allowed for the building to be leveled and a 10,000 square-foot building to be built.
And some other commercial use could occupy the structure, except for the prohibited uses listed in binding element number five, I believe.
That's all the questions I have for Steve. Anyone?
Yes, sir.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
If the property is sold, the binding element goes with the property to the new buyer, is that correct?
That's correct. They run with the land, unless there was a, what we call sunset, or clause, or a binding element where they would revert back. We've seen binding elements of that nature, where if it's ever sold or something that... But those are tricky to do. Usually have to come back before the Planning Commission to revert to zoning or change the binding elements, but happens more with conditional use permits as opposed to zone changes. But you're right, the binding elements would run with the land forever unless they were either amended or another rezoning was ever done on the property.
So I'm following up with Slim's question, and I guess whatever is put there now fits within certain guidelines.
Correct.
Even if they, the owner of the property, decides to do something else other than what fits, they've got to come back to planning and zoning to have and make a request, have they not?
If, as long as they're in compliance with their binding elements, they would not have to come back to the Planning Commission. And Commissioner Nash's example, it's general business, it's a grocery store, let's, again, let's say they want to open a pet store someday, or, you know, pharmacy. They could do that under general business without coming back to the Planning Commission. The only thing they couldn't do is what's in binding element number five. If they wanted to do one of those items, changed their mind, and for example, wanted to do a gas station, they'd have to come back to the Planning Commission, amend their binding elements. So those other uses, and again, there's dozens of uses in the zoning ordinance, the applicant's just chose to legislate out these items that you see in binding element number five. So there are other things that potentially could happen in general business some other day.
One question I failed to ask, if I may, Jim. What is the current square footage of the property? Of the existing structure, I'm sorry.
Existing structure? I may not actually have that in front of me.
I couldn't find it.
I might have it, hold on a second, I got it. I may have to have the applicant's, let me see here, I got that somewhere. No, I don't have the plat with me, I'm sorry. The applicant's going to have to tell you exactly the square footage of the house. Double-check here. I do not have that with me. Let the applicant come up and tell you the size of the square, square footage of the house.
Yeah, we'll get to that in a minute. Do you have any more questions for Mr. Hunter?
Well, let's just follow up with what Commissioner Nash, can we get, can we ask him to come up, Mayor?
Sure.
The owners, if you would, come up. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Alcott. Please, please forgive me, I'm sorry. It was not intentional.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My name is Mark Alcott. I'm an attorney here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. I have an office on 10th Street and live on College Street, and walked down tonight and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the commission tonight, and I do represent the people seeking the zone change. And just for a little background information, this property had an agreement on it for the sale based upon the owners, Mr. Miller, who is the president of PSM Enterprises, which is a closely-held family company that owns a lot of rental properties, and this is a rental property that they had, and it's contingent on the rezoning to the Salkecks, and I'll have them raise their hand. They're back there with their Realtor, David Witty, and they are the ones that are going to be operating pursuant to this zone change that was approved by the Planning Commission. The basic questions that I understand that are kind of the issues, other than what Commissioner Nash brought up tonight, was what are the operational hours going to be? This is going to be a neighborhood grocery store where people can walk and go to. The anticipated hours are going to be seven in the morning to no later than seven at night. It's not going to be more than what it is, and the intent to be neighborly was always the intent of the Salkecks, and so during the portion of the planning and zoning meeting with all the commissioners, a lot of these things were discussed that are being addressed in these binding elements. Everything that they, the neighbors, asked, and there were only two neighbors at that meeting, the ones across the street and the ones adjacent, there were no other neighbors at the meeting, but we met those things. We put the sign instead of one up high, we put it as a monument. We made sure the dumpster's going to be in the back, worked on some parking issues to make sure that it was neat and orderly, those type of things. And I think most important that they wanted that night was a provision that no alcohol beverages would be sold or served, and we made sure that those were done. And so those are the binding elements that were done, and it's their intent to have a neighborhood business, and their nationality, where they came from, is they're Bosnian. And I asked them, when they asked, retain me as their counsel, why do you want to put a neighborhood grocery store here? And they said, well, the bulk of the Bosnian population lives here, and there's not a grocery store for them to go to. And I said, well, is there anything unique that you're going to do? And they said, well, we're going to sell bread and milk and those things, and there's not one there that they can just go to handedly, and that's why they feel like it's a good place for the business rather than Scottsville Road. And so that's what this neighborhood business is, they're doing, and that's there. The answer to the exact square footage, I don't know. The home, I believe, is around 3,000, 4,000... The home, I believe, is around 3,000, 4,000 square feet. No, 2,000?
Living space about 2,300, garage is about 1,000.
Okay. So I was close, around 3,000 total square footage, including living space and garages, 2,300 and about 1,000. So about 3,300 would be the size of the structure. And the size of the structure was discussed on the evening of the commission meeting. And basically, this was put in there as recommendations from the staff. This isn't, 10,000 square feet wasn't a magic number. It was like, you know, let's try to make this fit. And for the green space allotment, you couldn't put anything 10,000 square foot from a practical standpoint unless you went higher. And then there would be other practical situations that a business in that area is just not going to be able to do. But in response to some of the remarks of there's a lot of residential, the residential there is multifamily residential is all this zoning. And so it's being taken to a higher use. There'll be more property taxes because Mr. Miller, his representative that night said, we can only get so much for this property if we were to sell it for a rental property. But we could get more if it could be general business. And that's why it was contingent on that sale. And so that's really the bulk of what we have. And if there's any other questions that goes to the owners of this property seeking this, I'll be glad to address them.
Mr. Alcott.
It's a pleasure to see you, sir.
Same here.
I've been serving with you when you sat to the right of me. You mentioned specifically bread and milk. And so I'm going back to the compelling reason for the zone change. Not more than roughly five, maybe six blocks. There's a new grocery store that sits at the very end of Old Morgantown Road and Morgantown Road.
Talking about the Dollar General?
That sells bread and milk and lots of other grocery items. I don't doubt that there's probably going to be ethnic food items that are going to be available in an international grocery store that are not sold in Dollar General. But I wondered why those items aren't highlighted and bread and milk are the two items that you talked about.
Well, they basically said, you know, there's some things that they might carry more than others. But, you know, my intent here isn't really to say an international grocery store is there for a particular population. It's just that's who they are and that's who they can market to. And that's why they feel like they can be competitive with the Dollar General, who's a national corporation. And that's business decision on their part.
I understand that. But if I'm looking for a compelling need and there's a grocery store that's already in the neighborhood, then what's the compelling need for an additional grocery store in the neighborhood that sells similar items?
Well, I'm not sure where you're coming from with your question on compelling need. The need of the community has been addressed in the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan that they filed under, either it fits with it in that plan or it doesn't. It doesn't say, do we want 10 grocery stores or do we want 12? It just says, does it fit? And the commission unanimously decided that it fit. And they really were very comfortable with my clients with the accommodations that they made at the hearing and were appraising them for doing so.
You had mentioned that it was in compliance with the comprehensive plan that existed at the time that the filing for the zone change occurred. Is there a reason that you filed when you did and you didn't wait until the new comprehensive plan came into play?
If I'm going to interject here, I don't know that that's a question that is appropriate for us to ask when they file. And Mr. Harmon, you tell me if I'm out of line here.
If they got an answer, certainly would have filed now because they won't wait to sell. I mean, there's a contract pending and most contracts have deadlines.
Well, you know, you can assume lots of things. And the timing is they were ready to do what they were going to do when they did and just...
I didn't want to assume. I wanted to ask. That's why I didn't want to assume. I wanted to ask. But I don't know. I have the mayor saying no. I have Gene saying maybe.
Well, I don't think we can take into consideration that what law we're going to choose. We have a set of laws that we're operating under for this particular one.
Or perhaps speculate what would happen under the new comprehensive plan. This is here under the existing comprehensive plan. So that's what they have to evaluate this proposal on. Why at the time?
Gene was much more eloquent in trying to say it than I was. I just...
I understand. Gene, Mayor, you all stop me if I go too far. But if what I hear Mr. Alcott saying is that the people who want the property rezoned to put the business there were very accommodating, then they're not very accommodating when you take in what the future land use of the map is.
I'm not sure that's a question or a statement, but...
My judgment is that it would be inappropriate to consider what a future land use map might be as opposed to what we're considering today.
And I understand what your judgment is and I respect it. I'm going to defer to our legal counsel on that.
But this does have to be evaluated on the comprehensive plan in place at the time of their application.
So when Mr. Alcott says that the applicants were very accommodating because they wanted to be neighborly, I believe is a word that Mr. Alcott used, we can't consider whether or not they were neighborly with regards to what the future use of the property is supposed to be?
Well, if Mark wants to answer, I'm not too sure.
I was merely making a statement of what the commissioners asking, what they said. Thank you to my clients on that evening of the full-blown hearing.
To be honest with you, I'm not sure I understand your question either. I mean, because they were, I mean, they do have, you know, binding elements that they agreed to try to ensure that, you know, there's some issues that they try to resolve those issues through the binding elements. I'm going to be honest with you, I have a little bit of trouble understanding what you're asking of Mark.
My question of Mark, well, what I'm trying to do is discuss what the future land use of the property is supposed to be. The mayor's telling me I can't do so. You're somewhat on the fence on it, but saying we have to consider it under the 1990 comprehensive plan. But it's interesting to me that Mr. Alcott, and maybe it was just a statement to be made, but said at the very beginning that he believed that the applicants, the people who were purchasing the property, were being neighborly in their attempts to meet the requests of the property owners that lived around the property. But the future land use of this property?
Is not something that we can consider in this hearing.
You keep saying that.
Well, let's take, I think our process is that if there's an objection to my ruling, then we vote on it.
Well, we have Hamp here as well.
But you said he was on the fence.
We have Hamp. Hold on a second. We have Hamp here, maybe Hamp can jump in too, make sure you understand your question. I don't think it is appropriate to use, in this particular case, try to make a decision based upon a future land use of a comprehensive plan that was not in place at the time this application came through. I think it has to be based upon a comprehensive plan that's in place at the time the application was made. And I do think it's inappropriate to make a decision based upon, if the land use changed with the new comprehensive plan, I don't think you can make a decision based upon a comprehensive plan that was not effective at that time. Does that help?
It does. It brings me back to intentions. But Mr. Alcott's telling me that their intentions only was that they were ready to move at that particular time on this piece of property and had nothing to do with anything else.
My understanding is based upon when they filed. And that's when they filed, this is the comprehensive plan that was in place and they were in compliance.
But I was looking for their intention of when they filed.
I just responded to that question.
That they filed when they filed.
That's correct.
Okay. If I go to the land use as it exists now, not considering the land use of anything in the future, all the green indicates residential. The other...
Which map are you referring to?
The yellow.
This one?
Okay.
Line? Same?
Yes, sir. Yellow is green. I see that there are some other greens for public, so the more yellow color. The vast majority on just this picture of the map indicates that it's all single-family residential, with the exception of the few colored spots that are on there. So I don't know how... You said, I don't, that the compelling need is not necessary. But I don't see, given that this is all residential surrounding, that the compelling need... Am I out of bounds? I'll take advice from an attorney on this or even the mayor, if he wants to chime in again. But is compelling need not an important part of this?
Well, Mark, where you're coming from, there is a case that's 12 or 13 years old. I've got the name. I don't have a site here. That basically says that when you're looking at rezonings, that you don't have to approve it just because it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I think that case has language that says you consider factors such as traffic, historic, traditional use. That case also goes on to say you can also want to address the issue whether there's a compelling need for the rezoning. And I think that language comes out of that case. What a compelling need means, I'm not sure I can tell you, but that's the language out of that case. It's also 13, 14 years old, I think.
Oh, yield the floor with one final statement. And that is, I don't believe this fits in with the current land uses of the area.
Any questions? Mr. Denny?
I wasn't here for, I don't think, for the...
We tabled it, so we didn't...
Oh, okay.
This is the first read.
Of course, it's always been my thought process and observation, having set on planning and zoning commission for about nine years. And I don't want to sit there no more, Mayor, so don't appoint me to planning and zoning. It's the fact that when applicants go through the process at planning and zoning and they follow all the rules and regulations and the seated members of the planning and zoning approves the particularly applicant's request based on fact and based on law. I've always had a problem in not agreeing with planning and zoning. And I guess the question that I asked a little earlier, Mr. Alcott, and I feel good about the answer. And that was when someone else buys that property, the binding element goes to the buyer of the property based on whatever they are at that particular time. But if I understood portion of it though, if the individual wants to have a business that falls within the prior zoning, then they can do it without having to come back to planning and zoning to request a rezone. Am I right?
Well, zoning, as you know, is what you can do with the property and the request is general business. And the binding elements, as you know, are perpetually with this property, no matter who owns it. And the only way they can change it is go before the planning commission and say, things have changed and we'd like to change this at this time. As we know, nothing in this world is not subject to change. But that body would have a full hearing to have any more changes. And so I'm not sure what your question is in regard to, and I think it was alluding to, there's a new comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan has general business on it also. And it still has to fit all these requirements. That's not going to change any of this. This is always going to run with the land the way it sits and the way it was approved.
I'm clear. Thank you.
At our last meeting, before we tabled it, there was some concern with the commissioners on the hours of operation. Has that been addressed?
Yeah, I mentioned that in my opening that the hours of operation were going to be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That is their intent on what it's going to be. There was some requests made whether this could be made a binding element and to address binding elements, when we discussed it amongst all the legal counsel, there literally had to be a new public hearing to alter, amend those. And so therefore, as in being addressed, that's what it is going to be in the practicality of it.
But again, going back to your statement that we don't know what the future holds, it could become a 24-hour property in the future, under general business.
I mean, there's lots of things that could occur. And I don't know of any 24-hour businesses on that road. But if it develops over the years, if that's something that's necessary and it fits within these parameters, it's possible.
So the 7 to 7 is an agreement of these particular owners?
That is what they are planning, yes.
But if they sold it, it can be any hours, under general business?
As long as it's legal.
Mr. Hunter? Under general business, can a business, whoever were to buy the property, can they operate hours different than 7 to 7?
Unless it was in the binding elements specifically and it could be enforced by the planning commission. Again, there's, I guess, an agreement or the applicant stating to you all publicly it's 7 to 7. But there's nothing that I know of that would stop them to make it 7 to 8 or 7 to midnight, other than that they've promised you all that it would be in the, that that's what they intend to do. But it could be a future property owner, I guess, as he's indicated, or different use could be thought up. And again, I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head would be 24 hours, except convenience, which without gas station, no convenience that I see. Unless there's convenience without gas and something comes in the future. But I can't think whether 24-hour use is unless someday check cash in or whatever. You know, fast food, I guess, well, it's fast food is starting to go 24 hours more and more. But yeah, right now, that item is not in the binding elements. And at your all's request, there was some discussion, as Mr. Alcott indicated, about could we somehow get that into binding elements tonight? And again, the planning commission sent you all a recommendation with this general development plan, those 12 binding elements. And I think the attorneys have all kind of agreed that we can't add binding elements tonight unless the applicant chose to go back to the planning commission, have a new public hearing.
And if they did, they would be under the new rules?
They would be reviewed under the new comprehensive plan. Correct. The focus 2030, get that term out there.
So the answer, if I can sum it up in a word, is yes. They can operate hours different than 7 to 7?
Unless there's a different way we can make that binding tonight that the attorneys can think up some other way we can attach this to this particular application. And I'm not aware of any. I'd have to let these guys all address that.
Mr. Moore? No way to do so?
Well, I think the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you. An attorney who speaks in a word.
And the second part of the answer is no. I don't think there's anything we can do.
There's nothing that can be done from this floor that would add that to the binding elements.
That's correct. That's true statement.
Okay. And I want to be clear. I have no reason whatsoever to question what appears to going to be the new property owners and their commitment to make it 7 to 7. What I'm trying to look at is that several people have continued to remain in the old Morgantown Road area to try to maintain the residential character of the area. And without that being in a binding element, it can be anything.
Well, in response, I'd like to just kind of wrap this up. Is that on behalf of the applicant, that was never brought up from any of the neighbors that night. And it was only brought up at a city commission meeting by, I'm not sure who.
Me.
Okay. But it was never brought up. And so there was never a request for them to make a binding element for that. So it wasn't that they weren't interested in doing it. It just was not addressed. All the things that they brought up were addressed. And that was the intent. And that's why I said the commission was thankful for that. And I believe that's why it was unanimous decision.
It was brought up to me by people who live in the area. And I'm not always, and I surely don't want to be disrespectful to anybody, but I'm not, and I don't know that I would completely understand it if I didn't sit in the seat. I would completely understand it if I didn't sit in the seat, but I don't know that people always understand how the process works, and they believe that if it's eventually going to appear in front of the city commission, and it has to be ratified by the city commission, then they believe they can share what their requests are with the city commission, and the city commission should be able to act upon it. So, simply because they weren't there on that particular night, or maybe because they were intimidated to stand up to the microphone and share it, I don't think, it means that there's not a request for there to be hours that would better manage the residential character of the area. What time was, did the hearing occur?
It was late.
Is that 10:00 o'clock? Is that 11:00 o'clock? Is that 1:00 a.m.?
11:00 to 12:30.
11:00 to 12:30.
Yeah, and the commission actually denied an applicant prior to that, and it was about, it started at 7:00, and hopefully, we won't go to 12:30 tonight, but we were here, and there was an active discussion, and everything that was brought up by the neighbors that were opposed was addressed that evening.
Of the two neighbors that were still here at 11:00?
Every neighbor that was present.
I don't have anything further. Anything else? Have any questions for Mr. Alcott, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, please come forward. And your name, ma'am?
My name is Trudy Capley.
Yes, ma'am, and you testified at the hearing, did you not?
Yes, I did, Your Honor.
At 611 Morgantown Road?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
One question that was not clarified last time was whether the property would possibly be used for a used car lot.
We can't take any additional testimony. Help me out, Mr. Moore, is that a reasonable question to ask?
Well, that was one thing that was asked, and he's, the attorney for Mr. Salkeck mentioned...
I beg your pardon.
That was one thing that they didn't want to give up, and I think that would be meaningful for us to hear whether there would be a used car lot on that property.
I believe that the applicant owned the car lot, was, I don't recall, was that question asked?
Yes, sir, please, Mr. Alcott.
That was addressed, and I was careful in my language, as lawyers try to do, is that everything was addressed. Not everything was agreed to, and so, the only thing not agreed to was put a binding element of no used cars. Everything else that was asked for was put into binding elements that night, and as their counsel, I recommended, we need to stop somewhere, and that's where we stopped, because the list was continuing, and the commission was comfortable with that, because they voted unanimously to approve the application with the binding elements that were agreed to.
But the applicant's already owned a car lot on Morgantown Road, so there was...
And that was what brought up, they have a car lot, but that's not what they'll be using this for, but they'll still have to be in compliance with whatever general business requirements are, and if they do sell cars there, but that's not their intent, and that was discussed also.
Thank you, Ms. Capley, appreciate it.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very concerned about public safety, and I'm very concerned about the police and the fire department being able to make their emergency calls on Old Morgantown Road. I think that this is something that is just very important, and it would be helpful for the residents of the area to have an understanding, at what point do we need to have a traffic study done? If the building is 10,000 square feet, or if it's operating 24 hours, at what point is a traffic study?
Mr. Hunter addressed that for you, but you stepped back to the microphone, so she'll remind it, at what point does a traffic study can trigger?
The threshold, again, under the zoning norms, would be 500 trips, or high-traffic generator, or any other use that maybe public works director or engineer would determine as a high-traffic generator. Could happen at the building permit level, it could happen with the change of use. I mean, at some point, if we understood the business has changed, the building still looks the same, but we think the use has changed, and when it's a higher-traffic generator, we could require a traffic study at that time.
And please give us two or three examples of a high-traffic generator, again, so Ms. Capley will know.
Things typically with drive-throughs, banks, fast food, convenience stores, you know, again, usually drive-through lanes are involved. Sporting events, big boxes, those type of things, big stuff, typically at 10,000 square foot range, you're at a, you're at a convenience store, crossroads IGA style, again, some of those may not be a high-traffic generator just by the convenience, but typically, you know, have an accessory bank or fast food tied on with them, then you'll hit those numbers sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Could be combined uses, too, that doesn't.
All right. Did that answer your question, Ms. Capley?
Oh, yes, thank you.
All right.
And may I just ask one more question, and it'll be short.
Okay.
May I please? Mr. Witty mentioned that he sent out letters to people in the area. What would be helpful is if surveys were sent to the property owners in that area, something simple, do you approve, or do you not approve? And in this way, we would have a better understanding of how people feel about it in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capley. Is there anyone else? Any summaries or any comments that need to be made? Anyone else? Make sure you had plenty of time. Ms. Sheller, I believe we're ready to call the roll, and the vote, a yes vote, will be to approve the planning and zoning recommendation to rezone the property at 603 Old Morgantown Road, and a no vote will be not to approve. If we vote no, then we'll have to come back with a separate reasoning for the denial of the application. Ms. Sheller?
Nash?
No.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, if you like. We'll now return to the first item on the agenda, which was the second reading of ordinance 2012-38.
Bear with me, if you will.
Sure.
Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds. An ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing issuance of, one, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,455,000, for the purpose of refunding the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation bonds, Series 2002A, refunding a portion of the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation bonds, Series 2004A, and refunding the outstanding master lease purchase agreement dated as of August 31, 2007, between Chase Equipment Leasing Incorporated and the city, the proceeds of which financings in turn financed the costs of the acquisition, construction, and installation of various public projects in the city. And, two, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013B, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,215,000, for the purpose of refunding the outstanding master lease purchase agreement dated as of October 7, 2010, between Chase Equipment Finance Incorporated and the city, and the outstanding lease agreement dated as of June 30, 2005, between Branch Banking and Trust Company and the city, the proceeds of which in turn financed the costs of the acquisition, construction, and installation of various public projects in the city, approving the forms of bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of the bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Will you read that again, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, and second by Waltrip. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-198.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Gary Counts and Charles A. Mosley to the Contractors Licensing Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Denning. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-199.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Edward Martin and appointment of Paul Rest to the Greenways Commission of Bowling Green in Warren County.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, and second by Waltrip. Point out to you that Paul Rest is here with us tonight. Appreciate your coming and serving on this commission. He's also, tell me the name of the organization that you're...
I'm president of Bowling Green Riverfront Foundation.
Riverfront Foundation. Maybe there'll be some coordination between greenways and the blueways, I guess they call it, so, please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, thanks, Paul. First reading of ordinance 2012-40.
Ordinance approving appointment to city board. Ordinance approving the appointment of Donna Harmon to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Nash. This is a little bit out of time, because we're saying goodbye to a good board member. Colonel Mac Reynolds is returning, or going back to North Carolina, I guess it is, to live near his grandchildren, which I fully understand. Do you have any comments from Mac?
You're not planning on moving, are you, Mayor?
Never can tell.
I see an opening. Mac was a very diligent board member, not that all board members that I served with on BGMU aren't, but he did an outstanding job. I felt really took the issue seriously, and really worked hard to understand any issues where he was confused on them. It's not surprising, given his military career and his demand to understand things before he makes an informed decision, but not only does BGMU lose an asset in Mac, the city loses an asset in Mac with him leaving to go to North Carolina. He'll be missed.
And be replaced with a former BGMU board member, Donna Harmon, who will welcome on her second reading. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-200.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2013-10 for Cariacus Park Tennis Courts 9 and 10 and Basketball Court lighting system for Musco Sports Lighting LLC of Oskaloosa, Iowa, in the amount of $28,900.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Nash. Mr. Febow.
In this year's budget, we have money for the replacement of lights at Cariacus Park for a number of tennis courts, 9 and 10, as well as the basketball court. You can see some of that work coming, going on now. Under the arrangement we wanted to do, we were going, we wanted to buy the lights separately, and our staff won't install them. We've had one bid on this project, and it's $28,900 from Musco. And Ronnie Jones is here, if you have any questions?
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-201.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-49 for turnout gear, jackets, pants, and accessories for the fire department from Bluegrass Uniforms of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in a unit price, at a unit price of $2,089, with a total amount not to exceed $31,335.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, and second by Waltrip. Mr. Febow.
We have scheduled replacement of our turnout gear, bunker gear, and our fire department went out to bid, we had two bidders, we, Greg put together a team to discern what is the best product, and it's their recommendation after this discernment, that Bluegrass of Bowling Green should be awarded the contract for $31,335. This is a higher bid, but it was felt that the product is a better product. Todd Napier is here, if you have any questions about their discernment process.
Any questions for Mr. Napier? Hearing done, please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-202.
Municipal order approving the purchase and installation of a 25-ton train condensing unit and chiller barrel for city hall through noncompetitive negotiations with Stuart Ritchie Service Group, formerly Rollin Mechanical, in the amount of $36,900.
So moved.
Motion by Denning, second by Waltrip. Mr. Febow.
On October 5, as some of you might know, the condensing unit and what is known as a chiller barrel went out here at city hall, and we thought it was important to get that replaced as soon as possible. We had our agent, Stuart Ritchie, formerly Rollins Mechanical, look at the options. They had three options. Their recommendation was that we replace the chiller with a more high-efficiency unit. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions about Stuart Ritchie's role, or why we went on noncompetitive negotiations.
Any questions?
My only comment, if it gets any more chilling in here, we're going to need gloves and hats and a floor heater.
It works up here, though, right? Mr. Denning's been around the thermostat.
Yeah, thermostat.
I get blamed for everything. I don't know why y'all pick on me.
What is the reason for the noncompetitive negotiations?
We hire a contractor for various purposes. Rollin Mechanical or Stuart Ritchie Services is who we have been using for that, and I'd have to defer to Katie. Katie, is that a, on what frequency?
It's a five-year bid. We approved it in 2008.
Okay, that's what I was unclear on.
We did do a bid process in 2008, and it's good for, it's a five-year contract.
Thank you. Pay those maintenance and repair everybody loves them.
Plus, they're a consultant also. They have to make judgments about the right materials they put in there.
And I assume, since it says formerly Rollin Mechanical, that's who we did the bid with, but they've been acquired by Stuart Ritchie now.
They just changed their name.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-203.
Municipal order approving a contract through noncompetitive negotiations with Freedom Dodge of Lexington, Kentucky, under Kentucky State Pricing Contract, for the purchase of patrol vehicles for the police department in the amount of $205,682.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Waltrip.
If we've learned anything over the last couple of years, is buying police cars is a very intimate process, in which it's very important. As we all know, the Crown Vic, the crown jewel of police cars, is no longer being made. There's been two options proffered to us. One is the Caprice, the other is a Charger. Barry Harris, along with members of our police department, Doug Hawkins, I've been working on that, have went through a process to determine what was best, and from that process, we believe that the best product is the Charger, and it is cheaper, better, and more roomy. Barry, you want to add anything?
Barry, I do have a question for you. I know that we're warranty certified for both Ford and Chevrolet, are we going to take those steps to do Dodge as well?
Yes, we are. We've already started taking those steps, so, yes.
Is it an onerous process? I don't know.
It's going to take a couple of months to get that done, yes.
Did, Mayor, did any of y'all get the chance to test drive the new car, or anything?
Didn't even bother to call me, I don't know.
I didn't either.
We had some officers that did test drive both vehicles.
You didn't have no city commissioners to test drive?
No, sir. No, sir.
And the sheriff let me test drive his cruiser.
Yeah, yeah.
Let you know that, chief.
We'll let you drive one when we get them in.
Any other questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
What does it sound like when you've not been practicing?
It happens.
Okay, thank you.
I've been working on it.
No further questions. I'm sorry. Thank you, Barry, appreciate it. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012 two oh four.
Municipal order approving the continuation of an agreement with Western Kentucky University for providing a leaf composting system for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
One of the things that the commission wants, uh, the city to do is work with partners to save money. Uh, we're here tonight to, again, continue an agreement with Western Kentucky to, uh, do a leaf compacting system where we take our leaves and they compost it and they give us a 25% return on the compost sales. Uh, the contracts are 45.9 and we, last year, we received a $4,870 in revenue, so it's a win-win for us because we can't do it for $45,000 or less, so.
Jeff is here, if you have any question?
If you don't mind me asking, I know this is a little bit off. Dr. Rudolph, who runs that program?
Yes.
Are y'all gonna consider the ethanol or the?
We, we did talk with them about the biodiesel and
Biodiesel, okay.
We are looking at, um, I, I guess a raw product in order to make that happen. So we're naming a raw product source in order to produce the biodiesel.
I understand, thank you. I just did it off track.
It's, it's, um, it's very impressive what they've done, so.
Any questions about the leaf composting? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 two oh five.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistance through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program in the amount of $3,780.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFebbe.
Our bulletproof vests are rotated on a consistent basis where we always try to exploit opportunities to get free funds. Jennifer Nash applied to the, uh, Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program through the Office of Justice at the federal level. We were lucky to and were thankful to Jennifer for receiving up to $3,700 and, $3,700, which is the max to allow us to purchase nine vests. Jennifer is here, if you have any questions about her efforts.
Any comments or questions from Ms. Jen?
Well, Jennifer's getting those grants, isn't she?
She is. That's her job. She works hard. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 two oh six.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the 2012 Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of $81,000 for the purchase of mobile radios for the police department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe.
Jennifer Nash strikes again. Uh, we are thankful to receive $81,000 from Homeland Security to, uh, buy 13, uh, radios that'll be Phase Two digital-ready with faceplates for our police cruisers that will line up with hopefully our new radio system. Again, Jennifer is here, if you have any questions about the grant procurement.
Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 two oh seven.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a certificate of project completion and a grant closeout agreement for economic development incentive funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Lost River Cave Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
Under the same category of working with partners in two oh five, we received a, a grant from HUD to help, uh, Friends of Lost River procure 22 acres of land to, uh, expand their operations there. Uh, we received the grant, we purchased the property through Lost, uh, Friends of Lost River. Uh, HUD requests us to close out, uh, the grant. Uh, your action tonight acknowledges that everything has been done and, uh, Mayor Bruce can sign it and, uh, we're finished.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 two oh eight.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting out-of-town travel expenses for city manager Kevin D. DeFebbe to attend the International City County Management Association Conference in Phoenix, Arizona.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Any comments, Mr. DeFebbe?
Uh, it was an excellent conference. Um, I haven't been to one in a while and it was nice to get back with my colleagues and learn what's, um, being discussed among city managers and types like that, so it was good.
It was good?
It was.
How do, how do we, how do we stack up against the other community?
Um, I think we do very well. As you saw from that citizen survey, it's hard to beat 90 percentile approval. The best recommendation you can get from any citizen is to tell their friends to come move there. I mean, that's pretty impressive. I went to the seminar about that, uh, about the citizen survey and I sat there, uh, smiling because I knew that we were ranking higher than most of the people sitting around me, so it was nice.
Good, good. Thank you. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2012 forty-one.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
This is our first budget amendment of the year. I'll defer to our eminent CFO to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mizel?
We've made it four months without one, so.
Thank you. No questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 two oh nine.
Municipal order designating Warren County Emergency Management Agency as a single point of contact to serve as the coordinator for the National Incident Management System, which is NIMS, in the City of Bowling Green.
So moved. Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe.
During time of disaster, it's critical that all the, uh, first responders speak the same language and are on the same page. The NIMS, uh, the National Incident Management System makes that possible.